Okay, let's get started here. I'm going to call this a special meeting order, adjourned meeting of the City Council order. And I know Teneus is somewhere in the building, so we'll recognize him when she walks in, as far as rule call. And let's get started with the Council workshop. I know that we have an, this is an important workshop, in my opinion. And I know we have a crowd of people that are going to be here for seven o'clock, so hopefully we can finish this up around, let's say, 6:45 to latest, and then we can get regrouped for the seven o'clock meeting. Go ahead.
Staff, it's my pleasure to present the capital improvement program project updates. And what I will be discussing today is the projects that have been completed to date, plans and studies as well, and projects that are under construction, projects that are in design, and other planning studies that are in progress. And I categorized these projects by streets and safety improvements, facilities and buildings, parks, and planning studies. So as of today, we have completed, or Public Works team has completed 12 projects totaling approximately 7.6 million. You can see, you know, photos from some of these projects, like the safe routes to school improvements at San Bernardino and Vernon, other safe route to school signage, the flashing stop signs that was implemented, alleyways improvements, paving projects on the south side of the city. And so that's just a little, some photos of some of the projects. As well as the fire station landscaping, which looks fabulous. I took one earlier on and one recently. The Pacific Electric Trail, and I encourage you to visit that recently. There's 62 plants, trees that have been planted, and that trail looks completely different. As well as the Transcenter Exolu restroom at the Montclair Transcenter. And the playground surface at Alma Hoffman Park, and other city hall improvements, like new cubicles, furniture, the counter to match finance, and our fabulous digital sign. So, again, breaking it down by the street and safety improvements, we point 2 million in 2021 lease revenue bonds. And in addition to that, some grant funds, like SBCTA for the Pacific Electric Trail, and the CDBG funds for the alleyway improvements. So that's just a little summary of those projects. Continuing to facilities and buildings, the charging stations, which was funded by, with AQMD funds, and the rest were, we used the 2021 lease revenue bond funds. And as you saw the picture of the playground resurface replacements. Wait a minute, I think I get this too quick. No, I didn't. Okay. And these are some of the planning studies that we have completed. The San Antonio Creek Trail, which was a grant by the Sustainable Transportation Planning, 2019 Caltrans, and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the sewer master plan update, which we use sewer funds to do. And those are just graphics of the, of the studies showing the facilities. The one on your right for sewer improvements, there's about a $20 million sewer upgrades that needs to happen sometime in the future. As far as, so this is a summary of all of the 12 projects that were completed by category, and so we have a total of 7.6 million in terms of completed projects. Any questions so far? Or even, when do we till the end? Okay. So our next phase of projects is, of course, in construction. We have 11 projects right now that are totaling 23 million. We have the Reader Ranch Park. That one's actually an old picture, but there's a lot going on there. We recently, or are in the process of restriping a lot of roadways in the city, and that's just an example, right here in, on Benito and Fremont. Arrow Highway and Fremont improvements. We're starting with a storm drain and signal improvements, and so we're getting that completed this year. And then a picture of all the repaves, well, one of the streets that was repaved in the south area of Montclair. And we're in the process of getting the Reader Ranch House painted. We found some lead, and we have to go through the bidding process, but that should get done before the end of the fiscal year. And then, of course, Sunset Park, that's in process as well. And this is just a little bit more information on some of these projects. So the retro reflective signal backplate will be completed at seven intersections in the next two to three weeks, you'll see those. And we're using gas tax funds for that. The 2024 alleyway improvements, we're just waiting for a start date. We're still talking to the contractor where to begin, how to proceed. And as you saw earlier, the Arrow Fremont improvements, they're in the process of connecting the storm drain or extending that to the development, which, for the village. And I have some asterisks there, so hold on a second. I can't even read it from here. So I'll read it here. So for, yeah, number three, the Arrow Fremont improvements, where those were, the design was, we used RDA funds for that, and sewer funds for what has, what's under other, let's see what else. Monovista Signal Interconnect, that's a project which is part of the I-10 Monovista Bridge Widening. They're doing that, and we already agreed to 100,000. The same with the sewer upgrades. We're paying 139,000 to install a parallel sewer line through there. And the roadway striping, there is a sample I showed earlier, that's also, and those are the roadways, Palo Verde from Central to Benson, Benito from Mills to Benson, in five intersections, and we're using gas tax funds for that. And the Ramona Howard Roundabout is actually out to bid. The bid opening is on April 22nd. We are short in funds. We have 771,000 in H-Sip funds, and we are, as soon as we get actual numbers, we are going to request additional funds from Caltrans. So hopefully that will be underway before the end of the year. In terms of facilities and buildings, we have the, we're still working on the Civic Center standby generator, so pretty soon we will be, you will be, see some construction in the parking lot by adjacent to the, to the courts, or we have, we'll put the foundation in enclosure and bring the generator that's already, we already have secured, and that was using CalOES funds. I mentioned briefly the Reader Ranch House, that's also in process, and we're using CDBG funds for the majority of it, but I think, I think it's going to come a little higher, and we're going to need, I guess, 2021 lease revenue funds to complete that project, or some other funds. In terms of parks, Reader Ranch, it's in progress. We hope to complete that by September. And of course, the majority of that project is being funded by the statewide, statewide park development and community revitalization program, grant funds, and the PerCapita Clean California grant funds is being used for the Sunset Park. So both of those projects should be done by the end of this year, or before that. Continuing, this, or this is the summary of all those projects that I briefly mentioned. So we are spending about $23 million. That's how much of improvements that are happening throughout the city in those categories. But obviously, the majority of them are in the two parks and, and the paving, I'm sorry, the, in streets and safety improvement projects. Now we go to the projects that are in design. And tonight, there is an item that will be before you to approve the contract for the actual design of Saratoga Park. We brought this to, for your approval, for the, you know, what we want to do with it as far as the master planning or the preliminary design. So now, to continue with the full design, we have a contract tonight for your approval. And we're also in the process of getting ready to, to route plans for the fire stations, 151 and 152, both of those are remodels, including the library and the reading room. And here's, again, another table showing the, the projects that are in design for, under the street and safety improvements. So I want to talk a little bit more about some of these projects. The first one is the Central Avenue Bridge replacement. Although we still have about 14 million in highway bridge program plans, Caltrans has told us that we, that bridge only qualifies for a rehabilitation of the surface, and they want to bring that down to 2 million. So we're going to still have that discussion with them to try to keep the 14 million. The estimated cost of that project is about 30 million, so we are short about 15, 16 million if we keep the existing 14 million. And out of that 14 million, we have spent about 2.6 million in design. We are almost ready to get environmental approval, and, but design has continued, and a lot of coordination with the BNSF in terms of design. And hopefully, with, with us moving forward with the environmental and the design, we'll continue to apply for grants. We actually attempted twice already to obtain funding for this project, and unfortunately, those grants are very, very competitive, so, but we will continue to do our best to, to see where we can get more funding and get that bridge done. The Central Avenue Rehab Phase Two is from south of the I-10 freeway, and it ends by the PE Trail. And we estimate that to cost, to cost about four and a half million, but with today's construction, our estimates are, it could be plus or minus, I don't know, half a million. It's, it's a wide range that we'll see. We'll see when we get to finalizing the design of this project, what it will be. And I'm not sure if we're going to use lease revenue funds, but we still have some funds to use for that, so. Same with Benson Avenue Street Rehab, and the limits of that project is from Hold to the MetroLink tracks. And the cost that you see there, the 1.172, is only for the city's portion. The total cost of this project is, is actually more, 2.7 million. That's what it's estimated to be, and Ontario and Upland share is about 1.4 million. Looking at my, and as far as design costs, there's a breakdown there for, you know, if you want to know in detail about how much we spent on the Central Avenue Bridge. And number five, the Mills Avenue Street Rehab, that does not include any right-of-way costs. And again, those are just estimates. We have a consultant for Benson, for Hold, for Mills, for Monovista, for Arrow Highway, so we, we do have, we are working on it, but in, we're trying to make some decisions as to the design and accommodating bike lanes and the number, you know, how, the narrowest lanes that we should have. So those discussions are happening, but you should see something in the near future on those projects. Silicon Avenue and Third Street Road Rehab, this is near the, what's going on on with those big buildings and on Ramona and, Ramona and Mission. So Silicon is Avenue from State Street to Mission Boulevard. We're looking at completely rehabbing that, that roadway. It currently doesn't have a sidewall, and it's something we inherited from the county. It's a kind of a substandard roadway, so we're going to get creative to make it look really nice and pave Third Street from Silicon to, to connect. As you know, Third Street is going to connect to Ramona from Silicon. So that's what that is, and we have allocated 160,000 with SB funds, SB1 funds to do the design. And right now, our best estimate is about a million. And we're going to continue to use SB1 funding for that project. And we do have a small amount of developer money for the construction. The Ada Avenue Howard Street Paving Project is a joint project with San Bernardino County, and we have agreed to pay 455,000, and that's using SB1 funds. And then the next three are Active Transportation Program Grant Projects, or ATP, cycle six and 11, and the descriptions are there, but mainly, we're focusing on the Montclair High School, Monovista Elementary, and Montero Elementary areas. We're going to do a lot of pedestrian crossing enhancements, so making, so making all these safer. So you'll see a lot of new reflective signage, speed, speed surveys, more flashing stops. Anywhere where we didn't put them before, we're going to put the flashing stop signs. And then the, the description of where those are generally described there on that table. So in total, we have about, let me, over here to my, all of these projects, so from the previous page to this one, is about 63.5 million. And we're going to need about 16 million of lease revenue funds to, for match, for the last three, for example, we need, those are the, the numbers that come with the grants. So we need to, I'm assuming we're going to use 2021 lease revenue funds for that, so, which is, and get us $20 million worth, I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, just get us a lot of nice improvements throughout the city, so.
We're good.
Doing really fast here. So in terms of facilities and buildings, you saw just the preliminary layout of the remodels, and so we think that project is going to cost about 2.25 to maybe two and a half million. We'll see when we get there. We are in getting plans to get reviewed by Building and Safety pretty soon, and glad to bid before the end of the year. And we will need funds to complete that as well, about 2 million. As I mentioned earlier, for the Saratoga Park, you have a design contract to be approved tonight to move forward with that. We have 2 million of Community Services Grant Funds from Congresswoman Norma Torres, and we also applied for a urban greening grant in the amount of 4.3 million, so if we get that, hopefully, that we won't need those funds. And, but we do need a 404,000 matching funds. And so this is the summary of all the projects that are in design by category. And overall, we're looking at 73 million dollars worth of projects, and 22 are needed to, to complete those projects. We have 22.7 million in grant funding, which is great. I don't know what city gets that many, you know, amount of grants. So we're constantly aggressively looking for grants, always, and I think the city has been very successful with that, but we will continue doing that to get these projects completed. So some of the plans and studies that are in progress, we have the Transcenter Master Side Plan. We estimate that to be a $34 million project. We did recently submit a grant to, to Race for 25 million to acquire the property, so we can retain the, the parking and continue its use for transit. And we have brought before you the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan, and the north, in the Montclair Place Downtown Specific Place, a Streetscape Master Plan. And so we've spent about 150,000 to come up with the master plan, showing how we want all of these streets to look, mainly. We're, our objective is to make them complete streets, so make them safe, wide sidewalks, add bike lanes, so, and that's going to be a very, I mean, a large investment of those roadways in the north, northern part of Montclair. And we are, again, applying for grants. We're going to try the Safe Streets For All and see how we do with that. And the Civic Center Master Plan is going to look at the campus here, and hopefully come up with a plan to bring back this campus to its mid-century modern look. So we're in the process, there, we're going to have a meeting very soon on what EPT Design has come up with, which is really, actually, really nice, so. And this is my overall summary of all of these projects. So we have completed 12 of them already. 11 are in construction, 15 are in design, so pretty soon, you, the ones that are in construction will be finished, hopefully, by the end of the, of the, this year, or fiscal, this year, the end of 2024. And then we have design projects that we're going to need to look for funding, or figure out how we're going to get those completed. And so, yeah, that concludes my presentation.
Very, 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 thank you. And I just want to note that the bond was adopted late in 2020, so really, in less, what, three and a half years, we've gotten this far. We have 12 projects already completed, 7.5 million spent. You have 11 projects in construction right now, which is about 22.5. And then you have another 15 projects in design phase, so that's what, you have something like 26, 27, 30, almost 40 projects in three and a half years. So I want to compliment staff. I know that's a lot of work to pull that off, based on my past experience working on public works projects. Congratulations getting that far. I guess I just, real fast, on page 20 then, so, am I reading this, based on everything you just talked about in here, with the exception of slide number 19 on the, the plans and studies? And I know, you know, we're not for bid, and I know costs might be higher, but you're, we're saying we have sufficient bond funds to complete these projects?
Yes, except for the big one, which was the Central Avenue Bridge.
Yes, yeah, take the Central Avenue Bridge out, yeah.
Yeah.
With the exception of that one. Anything else?
Well, the, the streets in the North Montclair area, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, that's all I have. I'll start with the Council, Mayor Proton Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have one comment and one question, a tiny question. First, I want to commend you and your team for all of this work that you have done. You've been very, very busy, and I hope you know that we, as well as all of the residents of Montclair, appreciate your hard work. We can certainly, as we're moving through from our city to our respective cities, just the feel of the road and the look of things, you can tell when you're in Montclair and when you're in another city, and I think that has to do with you and your team. So thank you for that. I have one small question. It was on page 11. When you talked about the Roundabout, I just need a bit of clarification. You said the Roundabout would be finished this year. If you could please clarify this calendar year or this fiscal year?
So our grant, actually, our deadline to start construction is September of this year.
Okay, so the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, so that's our goal. Hopefully, before that, we know Caltrans will give us the additional funds. If not, we'll have to decide if we want to proceed, or how we want to proceed to, with the construction and get it done. So it should get done by the end of the year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my question.
Councilor Ru.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is more on Benson Avenue. It's a very busy street. It's a north-south. It is the alternative for many people to Central Avenue, at least in my neighborhood, and growing up in that neighborhood, always has been. It is a street where many people do park in front of their homes because they need to, or they have no other choice. What specifically are we going to be doing on Benson Avenue?
Yes, so the plan is to make it into a one-way on each direction with a center paint, a painted center median for left turns, and add bike lane facilities on each side, and I believe parking, correct? Yes. So we do plan to have some kind of a open house of sorts with the school and with the, in conjunction with the, with Ontario and Upland, to discuss what we're planning to do with these projects.
So if we're narrowing it to one lane, somebody who's driving north from Upland, that's going to cause traffic tie-ups into one lane?
Well, whenever we are looking at modifying a roadway, we definitely do a very detailed traffic analysis, and so far, that is going to work. It shouldn't cause, except for one intersection, right?
But as they, if there are two lanes at northbound, going, if there are two lanes north of the 10, and they narrow down into one, you still have traffic congestion?
Yeah, I mean, you will have a little bit of congestion, and people have to get used to it being one lane in each direction. We have done a traffic study, which indicates that, you know, the, the road can accommodate that. The city of Ontario's traffic study indicates the road can handle that. There are a couple choke points, though, that we're evaluating, and that is Palo Verde and Benson, and San Bernardino and Benson. There's not much that we can really do with San Bernardino and Benson because of the configuration of San Bernardino relative to Benson, but Palo Verde, if the level of service declines, the traffic signal would improve throughput at that location.
Because Palo Verde and Benson, San Bernardino and Benson are school sites. There's enough problems there as it is, and I just think narrowing it to one lane in each direction is going, is asking for more trouble. As far as bike lanes, how does a person back out of their driveway?
Well, they do it now.
Right, but I'm saying, on Benson, how will they back out? They're going to have bicycles, and will they still be able to park in front of their home?
They will still be able to park in front of their home, and we know that parking is a premium along Benson Avenue, and so that's an important consideration. That's one of the reasons why the, we, we're down to one lane in each direction, and then a left, left-hand turn pocket. One, one thing that will benefit residents in that area is currently, there is no left-hand turn pocket for them to pull into their, their homes, so they cut across the double yellow line, or they make a U-turn with the double yellow there, and with the painted median, they'll be able to move into that median area and then make, safely make a left-hand turn into their home, and not obstruct traffic flow.
So they'll be able to freely park in front of their home? They won't need any special instructions or anything else?
There may be.
Permits? I, I hope.
No, there shouldn't be any permits. There may be a little bit of adjustment at the intersections in terms of parking in front of their homes, but for the most part, everybody will be able to park in front of their homes.
And are we prepared, if necessary, if this turns out that it's not working, to go back to the old way?
Well, it will take probably a couple of years for people to get accustomed to the roadway configuration. You know, that's a decision for the city to make at that time, but in both general planning documents, the, for both the city of Ontario and the city of Montclair, you know, this street has been targeted to reduce you know, this street has been targeted to reduce the number of lanes in the north and southbound direction predominantly to provide that traffic calming along Benson Avenue. That would reduce speeds along there because it's less comfortable for people to drive. You know, that's the narrowing of the road.
I guess as someone who drives that every day, and I have for most of my life, if it's going to be as I think it will be, I'm simply going to avoid driving it, which is what I don't like. You know, we're trying to turn this into a bicycle community, and we have too many people who commute north and south. Central cannot handle it, Montavista cannot handle it. Benson, in my opinion, should be widened to accommodate it, not narrowed. Because I just don't know how people are going to get north and south through this city. Mills can't take it, Ramona can't take it. So the only two streets are Central and Montavista, and we're going to overload them. And I see that happening. And I think it's... I think this is going to have deleterious effects on the neighbors in that area.
Well, our next steps as far as this project is to go is to meet with the school district
Right.
and present the striping plan to them, get their input, and make adjustments as necessary. And then also to meet with the neighborhood.
And this project, we'll come back to the city council to award the bid. And I guess if we wanted to, we can see copies of the plans and all that stuff.
If the neighbors do object to this, will it still go forward?
Well, that's certainly something that we'll discuss.
I'm opposed to it, thank you.
Let's just wait. Let's just wait when we get to that point. We're not there right now. Okay, any more questions, Councilmember Rue?
That's it for the morning.
All right, Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, thank you. In my notes, I had touched on myself with some of the comments that my colleague, Mr. Rue, just brought up. So I'm going to go a little bit out of order because I was going in page order by my notes. But since we're on the topic, regarding Benson and the center median, it's going to be a painted median, not a physical concrete slab?
That's correct. Yeah, that will allow cars to safely get into that center median and make, like Rosemary says, safely turn into their driveways or get out.
Or just strip it?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was trying to envision that, and I thought, oh, wait a minute.
Imagine, I believe... Is Orchard like that?
I think so.
Yeah.
There's a section of Orchard that is.
Very similar to Orchard.
I think if I drive my way to Portales, I think so.
If you drive through Orchard, it'll be somewhat like that.
I believe it was on page fifteen, you had stated that there were, of those projects, some of them, we have consultants. Can you tell me which ones we already have consultants for? Because I believe you said they were...
All of them.
All of them?
Yeah, we have design consultants working on all of these.
For all seven? And I want to get... Piggyback on what my colleague had stated. In every one of those streets, is there a bike lane component incorporating brand-new bike lane components to each of those streets?
Well, Mills already has one, so that will remain. Montavista, we're still studying that. We haven't... I don't think a final decision has been made yet. And we may or may not be able to fit a bike facility there.
On Montavista?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Arrow in Fremont, there are... I believe on Arrow Highway, just like right now, it'll be like a share-o type of facility where cyclists can share the road with cars.
Okay, I can...
But Fremont, I believe, has a dedicated lane, yeah.
We're talking from the mall to the...
Yes, to connecting to the village.
To the... Okay. I can see the bike lane configuration working at Arrow in Fremont, I really can. I would just stress to staff, this should come as no surprise because I harp on it all the time. Regarding Montavista, we already have problems regarding speed as it is. And unless we find a way to widen the street, because I know it's only one lane from San Bernardino to Benito, and I know that's a problem, having a bike lane incorporated into that, I just don't see working. And I think it would be problematic, as my colleague has alluded, but a separate area. He's talking about Benson, but I would say those same points of concern of his apply to Montavista. I just... I see a need for bike lanes in certain sections of the city, and I wouldn't want every single street to start incorporating bike lanes. Now, is the bike lane component a condition of the source of funding? Is that what... Many cases, that's what's the requirement?
That is true, yeah. A lot of the active transportation plant fundings or Hzip funding is mostly to traffic calming type of solutions. So that also includes accommodating all types of transportation modes.
Is that what happened with respect to the repaving and the bike lane on Orchard?
Correct.
Okay. I'm not in favor of that because I don't think... I don't think it's always necessary. And I... We are not... Others can disagree with me, but we are not a biking community. We're not like Claremont. Claremont is. I went to high school there, and, you know, I grew up... Not grew up, but I ran those streets with friends when I was in high school. And that's a biking community. We're not there because of the colleges, yes. Now, just confirmation, the roundabout should be finished by the end of this year?
That's our goal.
Okay.
Assuming we have all the funding and we get the additional funds that we need.
That's encouraging, and thank you for that. On page... Let's talk... Let's go to page seven. I believe I'd like two or three points. Page seven, concerning the modular restrooms, item number seven. Are these the restrooms that... I'm getting confused. The restroom facility that Greyhound agreed to pay or install, is it separate? This is separate?
No, these are the... This was actually... I'm not sure what happened to my slide here. This was...
This is the one that's installed there at the transcenter.
Right, and it was paid by SB CTA.
So the existing one's just going to be refurbished?
There are no existing ones.
No, this is referring to the cost of installation of that particular restroom.
You're asking if there's...
To Montavista Avenue, staff has had numerous conversations related to whether or not Montavista Avenue would entertain bicycle lanes. And we're of the same conclusion that Montavista Avenue is too narrow. There is no way to widen it. And so we are not looking at bicycle lanes on Montavista Avenue. We are looking at them on Moreno Street and, as indicated, on Arrow Highway. Montclair, in fact, is getting more bicycle users. A lot of the tenants in the high-density housing that is being developed in North Montclair are actually the college students from Claremont. And so they are using our streets to commute to the colleges in Claremont, not only by vehicle, but also by bicycles.
No, and I would agree that the north is changing, and it will accommodate that because of the colleges. I just don't think the entirety of the city is a biking city, especially the heart and the interior of the city, which are the old track homes from the nineteen fifties. Just what... Since I'm on the restroom and I got confused, the Greyhound already installed the bathroom that they committed to bringing?
Okay, no, the city installed the bathroom. Greyhound only made a contribution. The city acquired the restroom and installed it. And Greyhound has agreed to provide an annual fee related to maintenance as well as leased space of the bay that they are using.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. On page eight, Monica, you mentioned the sewers, and there was a two million dollar...
Twenty million.
Twenty million?
Yeah. Well...
Oh, that's along Montavista Avenue, the I-ten freeway, which...
Yeah, the majority...
Still hasn't been installed yet.
Yeah. The majority of the sewer lines that are impacted are along Montavista and Ramona. So similar to the sewer that's going under the I-ten freeway in Montavista. We need to do that throughout, all the way to north and south of the city.
And that twenty million dollar allocation is just for that particular stretch?
The update... There was a previous update in twenty seventeen, and it was about... It was less, less. But now with the update, it's about twenty million worth of sewer upgrades.
So to be clear, there is no allocation that is being recommended. That's just the estimated cost of doing the completion of that project. So that funding has yet to be determined and developed.
Okay. On page twelve, you have in your triple asterisk, it says requesting four-month extension to complete the project, and that's Sunset Park. The date of October twenty twenty-four, we're talking four months from that. So we're talking maybe February of twenty-five, or is that the four-month?
That's the four.
That is the four, okay. That's what I want a clarification on as well. And then on page fifteen, item number two, just trying to visualize it again. We're talking Central Avenue from the ten to the trail, so we're just talking northern Montclair?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Now, I think that is... I think those are my points. I thank you to staff. How long have you been with us now?
Two and a half years. And, yeah, and I... These projects keep me going, and I have a fantastic staff. I actually want to thank them, and specifically Rosemary. She's amazing, and we could not do all of this without her help, so. But we do have a good team now. We have an associate engineer, we have a project manager who's handling a pretty big project, which is Reader with, you know, he has some experience, but he's learning a lot, and we're training them. So we're going to get all these projects done.
To the two of you, thank you for your expertise and your help and your diligence and all. This is impressive. I hope that members of the public watch this video once it's posted so they can see just exactly what has been done, what's in the process of getting designed, and then what's coming down the chute. So thank you. I am very, very pleased, appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez.
Well, thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough. So just so I know, if we were to have to go with the surface rehabilitation only for the Central Avenue Bridge replacement, is that going to affect any of our other projects in the future? And are we concerned that there's potentially structural or other safety issues with the bridge as is?
So that bridge is structurally deficient, and I don't understand why Caltrans, other than, I guess, funding is an issue. And there's, I don't know, if you look at the grade for bridges throughout the state and the nation, I think they get like a D-plus or something like that. So there's a lot of bridges that are in that condition. And so they're very... Caltrans is being very, I guess, picky about which projects they're going to fund and which ones they're not. So I... We just need to have that conversation with them and try to convince them that replacing the bridge is the most efficient solution to that bridge. But right now, there is... I didn't see any structural... In the latest report, there isn't anything about making it unsafe or anything like that.
Okay, and then also, you know, I thought that my job would be a lot more difficult, you know, having to choose between projects. But you're doing such an outstanding job. You lay it out for us, and it seems like we're able to do everything that we need to do in the city, which is really incredible. But I want to thank you for putting such focus on the parks. Our community really appreciates that. I am at our parks quite frequently, and they are packed. And it's wonderful to see the families there, and they look wonderful. They look beautiful. Also, one thing that I will say every biking community has in common, and I could say this confidently, is it is a safe environment for bikers. So, you know, once we make that for our city, I am confident that this is going to be a biking community. And just from my own experience and from speaking with friends and family, you know, I know people that will be biking around the community, myself included, that just don't really have a safe place to do that just yet. But when Ramona's set, that's probably the closest way for me to get to the Pacific Electric Trail, and I'm going to be going there all the time. So I'm really excited that that is going to be prioritized. So thank you very much.
Again, I couldn't do this without my staff and also Director Diaz and all the directors, the funding. The... It's just...
Thank you.
It takes a whole village to...
Absolutely.
When we're going through these plans, discussing bike lanes or no bike lanes or reduction or landscaping, it really takes all of us to do that. And of course, with the great leadership from our city managers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you very much. Again, when the voters passed the bond measure, we promised them that we're going to do improvements, including capital improvement in the city. And I again appreciate staff, three and a half years to this point, this is very good. And I appreciate this report, it was very comprehensive, I have a better idea of what's going on, where the money's going. Orgeron, thank you.